Washington County Board of Commissioners Roundtable. Commissioner Rogers is just walking into the room. I am joined with Commissioners Jerry Willie, Pam Trese, and Nafisa Fai. Hello there, Commissioner Rogers, welcome. I want to thank my colleagues for saving the shaded parking lot for me and my car. How lucky am I?
You didn't use that late parking?
Nope.
When Nafisa was our valiant parking, or not Nafisa, Megan, but I wasn't about to give her my purse. We might not see her for a while.
Oh, and I know you need her. Megan was here at the meeting, keep him straight. Okay, so we're going to get rocking and rolling. We have a couple of different topics before we get into part two of our strategic planning section. First off, I want to call your attention to all the information that was provided as part of our rolling agenda, and there are a few things I'd like to bring to your attention. Next Tuesday, we'll be receiving the latest and greatest information on the Center for Addictions Triage and Treatment. That's a pretty big thing. But I also wanted to highlight that your September 26th meeting. Wait a minute, I can't even read. Oh, no, no, sorry, my arrow up here. Brad and Kevin are, Brad Anderson and Kevin Moss, are working on the process for our sheriff appointment, given Sheriff Garrett's notice to us about his retirement. We have only two meetings in September where we have all five of us and one meeting in October. So I know, I think it's important that we provide Sheriff Garrett and the potential appointed sheriff transition time before the effective date, so I've asked them to figure out how we have our discussion and any action on that. Then on September 26th, you'll see on page two, WCCLS will have the proclamation for banned books week, please bring your favorite library book. Lisa Tattersall, of course, will have books in case you forget, but it's a good time for you to say, here's my favorite book, here's why, and I support free availability of good Moving over to October, you know, we have the two CWS Board of Director Learning Days. Commissioner Trese will be out on October 17th with her vacation flow, and I will certainly be out the 24th. It is a little up in the air as to whether or not Commissioner Trese will be out because her flight gets back late in the evening, but she's hoping that she'll make it, which is good news, because otherwise, as you see on your business agenda, you have an ordinance, 882, coming to you at that meeting, and it could just be three of you, which is the minimal necessary to consider an ordinance.
I smell a red.
Or we could move the date for the ordinance.
I'll leave that to Ms. Inge and all the experts to figure out. So we get that done appropriately. Then moving on to the November schedule, November 28th, Commissioner Willie didn't intend to give me a heart attack, so I did confirm that under November 18th, he is only on vacation from November 15th to December 1st. So we do have three meetings, three business meetings, work session rather, in November, and he'll miss that one. Then moving on to December, wait, yeah, that's all my purple tags there. On December, December 5th, work session, we'll have a conversation about ARPA, that's another one of those big things for us, and we have an executive session, one of our executive annual reviews, and on December 12th, we only have two business meetings that month, and December 14th, which is a Thursday, is a CWS training day. So those are just some updates and highlights I wanted to help us all have the benefit of. I do have two other items I wanted to bring to your attention. I can't remember if I've mentioned this or not previously, but across our three counties, our tri-counties, we are all under contract with American Medical Response, and as we know, we have a national shortage of paramedics across our country, including here in our state, and so the three tri-county chairs are going to meet with an AMR rep after our District 8 meeting in October. Yes. In order to make sure that we are keeping the response going across all three counties, because otherwise, it puts stresses on other parts of the system. So that'll be a useful conversation. Then the last thing I have is, given our rolling agenda, I asked you previously to think about what items would you like to receive ACRE advisement on? From my perspective, as I answer that, we know from the rolling agenda that we're having a work session right now set for October 10th, and I know the team's working hard on it for the Public Safety and Justice Briefing, and I'm hoping that we'll have a town hall in the subsequent remainder of the year, maybe as far as January, to share that ecosystem with our whole community. But I don't know if that's a topic that you would like us to bring ACRE along with us or not. So really, that's the one that stood out for me.
Can I comment?
Yeah, of course.
I think that as we think about the topic areas that we would like involvement from ACRE, I think we have to be fairly descriptive about that topic area, because one of the issues I think we're having at ACRE is trying to find our way and trying to make clear definitions about what different situations are. So if we're going to ask for advisement, I think it has to be really clearly defined what the question is. So would you agree with that, Chair?
Certainly wouldn't hurt. In my case, if with this example, I was thinking about just from their experience, what more, as community members, do they think we need to help community members better understand about the county's role in the public safety and justice ecosystem, right? We're doing a lot of knowledge building.
And my guess is that ACRE wouldn't necessarily, if you said we want advisement on public safety, that's not necessarily where they would go.
Yeah, I think some of the, I think, I know you're right. Some of them would want us to answer the question, well, specifically, what are you doing for racial justice, or what are you doing for criminal justice reform? And my answer to that today is, we're just trying to keep the system working so it doesn't collapse. But that's kind of a flippant answer, not yet informed by the whole white paper.
But I just want to make sure that as we talk to the commissioners, from ACRE perspective, I think it's really important that we put parameters around what we're asking for.
Yep, yep, absolutely. And we have time to further discuss this, but I wanted to keep inquiring, because we've tried to be very clear that the mission charter for ACRE is to provide us with advisement, and we have a responsibility to be clear with them about what that is, otherwise, they'll just take things on 100% themselves.
The tail's wagging the dog.
Yep, yep. So that was it for me, anything?
Well, are we going to talk right now about what areas we'd like to get advisement from, or are you?
You're more than welcome, yeah.
I think that as we look at our Health and Human Services arena, where there are pockets there that I think we need to be asking for advisement from, and I would refer to staff for help in finding those areas that we need to look at. There are equity hot topics, obviously, and I think those equity hot topics are the ones that we should be focused on here, too, but again, with that containment of what the question is. That wasn't, am I too vague there?
No, but I think it's incumbent upon you as a board member, we can't just turn to staff and say, what do you think? Or what do you think we have to offer? And at our November Roundtable, we will have more information to go over in terms of the board's focus areas and how that is on the roadmap, but there isn't anything staff knows that you don't already know is underway. For example, the CAP, for example, our Behavioral Health Network, and...
You're right, you're right. You know, I guess I was thinking about maybe an awareness level that I didn't have, but I think you're accurate, and it would probably be better as we look through in November, what the focus areas are, what pops up as being an ACRE-related topic.
Yep, yep. So, yeah. I think we'll know more as we go over that Public Safety and Justice briefing about what kind of questions we might have for advisement for ACRE on that, right? But I feel pretty comfortable that all the things that we're doing involve equity and advancing equity in Washington County. I think some of the committee members there are looking for something far more discreet and significant about their weighing in, yeah, so we'll see. But if you have any thoughts, just raise them and we'll go over it. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay. All righty, well, we're right on time then, great. How about topic two, Fiscal Year 2025 Fiscal Planning and Budget Process with Greg Munn. Mr. Munn?
So I'm going to tee Greg up while he gets settled and provided a bit of time. We're flying up here in this conversation. This is the initial conversation on long-term financial and budget planning. There will be a series of conversations after today, so I want to ground us, we're up here, and we only have three minutes for this section of the agenda. So there's probably going to be lots of questions that you have, so we won't have time to dig into all the financial detail, but we'll follow up at another time, and Alana will be helping...
Can you be the timekeeper?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'll give you a 15-minute morning and a 5-minute morning.
Just going to pat me on the shoulder.
Yep.
All right, good. I was telling Commissioner Willie that I always do one of these when you get too long, and they just cut off. So if I get one of those, I'll speed up.
Okay.
Okay. That works too. Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners, it's great to be here this afternoon to talk about a very important topic, and it's important particularly to Washington County, where we are these days in our planning efforts, so I'm just going to jump right in.
I got the same.
Oh, you got the, okay, thank you.
Oh, wow.
Okay, nice. Okay, so just quick overview, so long-term financial planning, talk about what is it and why is it important, what's the important relationships to other planning activities, for example, CIP, our policies, Strategic Plan, how do all those come together, and why is it important to Washington County? More specifically, there's a high-level calendar that breaks down some of these concepts into more details and puts some specific dates on it, so as I talk through this, we'll be able to provide some context and actually what's going to happen in upcoming in the near future. And then, of course, or then we roll into FY24, FY25 budget, and we have a little bit of an overview of the calendar coming up there, and then the last piece is just more questions and feedback. So I'm hoping that this isn't so much a presentation as it is a conversation, I would love your feedback as we start to formulate this in forward, but you'll see, a lot of my information that I provide, like I've done in the past, is usually based on either past experiences or on GFOA best practices, I tend to rely on that, because they are the experts and see these sorts of things throughout the whole country. All right, next slide. Okay, long-term financial planning, what is it and why is it important? It's an inter, it's one of the key pieces, it's an interconnected, the interconnectedness and relationship to other planning processes. As I mentioned a minute ago, it's most valuable when developed with other activities. So I have a graphic that comes up that explains that, if you've already seen it. It moves our thinking from a one-year timeframe to several years into the future. It highlights longer-term fiscal strategies, provides transparency and increased understanding of the relationship with fiscal planning, with other planning work, and by integrating other long-term planning processes, CIP forecasting, for example, decision-makers can identify and monitor future issues of concern well advanced. It helps tell us a longer-term story, not just one year, it can look out several years, and as I mentioned already, it's a GFOA best practice. Next slide. I came to read verbatim what's on a slide, but I believe it's just valuable, so the GFOA recommends that all governments prepare and maintain a long-term financial plan that projects revenue, expenses, financial position, and external factors for all key funds and government operations at least five years into the future. Governments that utilize debt financing and/or utility rate setting should consider a long-term financial plan greater than five years. The plan should be reviewed on an annual basis and updated as needed or as major assumptions change. Long-term financial planning should be the starting point for capital planning, developing our annual budgets, estimating our future revenue, and other planning processes.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So when we started, when three of us started as commissioners in 2019, Washington County had in its budget a five-year list, right in its budget, for different capital needs. What's the difference between having a five-year list and having a financial plan?
So I haven't seen the list, but I'm going to venture to guess that it was just a list of items spread out over five years for capital improvement items. The key difference is, is how do you fund those over five years, and not just what the expenses are, but how are you going to pay for those, and what are some of the implications of different funding mechanisms? So if we have grant funds that we don't have to pay back, those mean something different than if we're debt financing and we have to find a source of revenue annually to pay that debt service. Does that debt service go on for 20 years, or 15 years, or even three years? So this is another slide from the GFOA best practice, and it's the, so in the left, this is when I was talking very beginning about integrating different planning activities, that long-term financial planning is just one of those activities. And over the last year, we've been talking a lot about all of these, really, we've been talking about strategic planning, we've been talking about our financial policies, the CIP, of course, and we've been spending just a little bit of time on budgeting. But this is a great chart, because it really, as we move forward, it's good to integrate all of these activities, even though one might fall in financial planning and another one might fall in the CIP. So the purpose I want to share this is just to hopefully ground the board in this bigger picture of thinking of our fiscal planning.
So you were saying the best practice of the GFOA is not just necessarily long-term financial planning, but it comes with this bigger purpose, all these...
Yeah, and I think the concern that I have is when we talk about long-term financial plan, we don't want to talk about it in a silo. When we talk about the CIP, we don't want to talk about it in a silo, so that's one piece of it. The other piece is just to look at this as they're all integrated together. So as we move forward with one, we move forward really with five.
And that's what we, how we could say we're needing the best practice, because not necessarily our annual budgeting?
So annual budgeting would be a component of that, but you can see how it's interrelated with some of the other planning activities.
Thank you.
Greg, if you had to put those columns in a priority order, would it be developing financial policies, is what we can start with this process, maybe strategic planning, then long-term financial planning, capital planning, and then budgeting? So wouldn't that be the hierarchy of what's most important?
I think that would make sense, yeah. Okay, next slide. So why is long-term financial planning important to us specifically? It's, it helps us to understand some of the factors that we deal with every day in our annual budgeting and even longer. One is our situation with restricted revenue, passage of Measure 50 in 2097, there were a lot of changes in the ordinance property tax system, including a system where each district has a permanent rate, and that rate, as it's applied to AV, is only allowed to grow at 3% with some exceptions per year, so we have a cap on our revenue. The other reason it's important, and the reason is to be able to plan for budget impacts of inflation in the future, we've obviously been living through that quite a bit in this last couple of years, and it's still an issue in moving into the next year's budget. It helps us understand the full cost of providing services so that future fiscal impacts and decisions are clear. We've talked a lot about full costing and transparency in some of our activities, moving our Internal Service Fund activities out on their own, so they're able to be seen and understood and fully costed. It provides a timeline for future financial liabilities to help us source revenue to fund those liabilities, for example, our capital improvement needs, long-term facility needs and such. It provides more information to help guide and advise the determination of future objectives and goals and their long-term fiscal impacts of decision-making. And most immediately, and the one that we've been dealing with currently, is it helps us reduce our fiscal deficit while with the goal of preserving our services.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Unfunded liabilities, what are they in your mind?
Well, hers...
Hers is a big one.
Hers is a big one.
You mentioned up there, facilities with under insurance liabilities, earthquake could be a big problem for us. So the point is, do we look at everything here? I don't know what you're doing with that.
Well, I think that's all part of this process, is to be able to identify our liabilities, and some of those we plan for by planning reserves, some of them we can plan for by planning to fund the debt, others we cover with insurance.
So the facility is just an example, there's not meant to be...
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep, hers. Thanks for the question. Okay, next slide. So this is a little bit of an eye chart, I apologize for that, but my hope here was to take some of these more conceptual items we've been talking about, boil them down into something that looks a little bit more like a to-do list, and, because we love to-do lists, because when we get a to-do list item done, we can check it off and do a good about moving forward. So again, this is just the high-level financial plan roadmap over the next two and a half years, and the intent is to provide some specificity of the major activities related to financial planning. So the first group determine, and they're grouped together, so the first group determined gap between the cost of services and available funding includes, you can see a service level assessment there, and that is slotted to begin the next fiscal year, FY24, FY25. The initial two-year plan, which is the initial two-year focus priority list, that will help us, it's precursor work to the community strategic plan, and will help guide our budget guidance coming up this next year. You can see that's slated for November, Public Safety and Justice Report in October, and then the last two, they have the general forecast and the special revenue forecast for Sip and Gains areas, to break the board, not only what we think next year's going to look like, but also to give you an update on where we are this year compared to where we thought we would be. So we'll circle back and talk about initial forecast for this year, and then again next year as well. And then on those, you'll see that there's a cadence, it's every six months, we'll come back and provide an update in May, and then again in December, and fall next year, and kind of keep that six-month cadence going.
Whoa, backup, please. Why on earth, under developed revenue enhancement options, are you committing us, the board, under the developed revenue enhancement options, the last two?
Those aren't commitments, those are just items to be considered as part of a planning process, they could be...
So why not just say, further discussion of options, without being explicit about those?
Poverty tax reform makes me nervous. Less for us.
Oh, I mean, we'll have people coming at us in 20, in the remainder of FY24, simply because it's listed.
Got it.
Fair point.
Sign somebody that I think out.
No, that's, it's sales tax, it's sales tax, not me.
Jerry is sales tax, and Commissioner Rogers, it must be a pet project before his term ends in FY24. See my point?
Yeah, I just do, yeah. Actually, when I was putting this together, I thought this is probably going to start a conversation here.
I have a serious question. The Public Safety and Justice Report, is it on this list because then we have to talk about the number and Public Safety and Justice levy renewal?
Right, let me explain to her. So the Public Safety and Justice Report, I can actually add color, this is much better because she's getting into the group. We have significant funding challenges within our Public Safety and Justice, yes, we have the upcoming levy, but actually maintaining core mandated Public Safety and Justice is a significant concern of the department and the staff, and your board is also impacted by that, so that's why it's highlighted here.
And it's on the rolling agenda.
Thank you. Where does the levies renew on this project? The original option, operating levies is not?
Yes, that would be the second one, the developed revenue enhancement options, revenue options, operating levies.
So that's, those are the two levies?
Those are the...
Renewal or more?
Those are two of the three existing levies.
There would, it would really be both, and as part of the conversation, is renewal, is the board, it's an option for the board to consider.
So halfway through.
Okay, thank you. Okay, developed revenue enhancement, whoops.
Sorry.
We're almost there, just a couple more points here. Coincide with other planning purposes, strategic planning, capital improvement, budget fiscal policy, that's what we just talked about, but what's interesting is, is you can see there's a lot of activity going on in those sub-planning exercises. The budget redesign and process improvement... The budget redesign and process improvements, that really goes back to last year and the plan there is, we, I think we have, we have thirty-two items identified in our budget redesign and we're through seven of them and we're working on nine. So that's going to take us out into a couple, in a couple of fiscal years. And then-
How are we going to experience that though? I mean, okay, great, you got a lot of activity, but how is it going to help the agency, Ms. Angie and her providing a proposed budget? And how is it going to help us in the months of May and June with regard to our deliberations?
That's a good question. So for example, simply moving our internal service functions out independently, that was one of the items, out independently in the general ledger, so that there, it's more clear and transparent. That's, that's one item. Providing a general fund forecast so that we look at, we're making, considering making decisions this year, what's the fiscal impact in year three, four, and five? That's another item. Clarifying some of our, uh, financial policies, you know, what should the reserve levels be in the SIP? What should our contingency levels be in the general fund so that we can measure our fund balance?
I'll just take it offline, never mind.
Okay. And then the last group there, monitoring and reporting, so all of this planning work eventually turns into activity and then there's a circle back opportunity with recording. So, coming back to the board with the financial report, uh, we're working on that now, we're actually, um, doing some work with CWS who is interested in, in updating their financial reports. We're working as a team to be able to come back to the board, yep, same board, looking for something that might be, look similar to each other. The act for budget frequency, what's that? Budget frequency, quarterly? Quarterly, yeah.
So, this is, this is why I had trouble with the budget redesign and process improvements. There's work that the organization is doing, but filling every single one of those monthly square boxes says something's coming to the board every single month. So that particular line is out of sync with the rest of your model.
The solid black one on the board?
Yep.
So what you're saying is the one, the individual boxes means we're going to see something on that at the board level?
Uh-huh.
But there's going to be work continuing, it's just not coming to the board, okay?
Right, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
See, I was thinking that there should be more continuous black boxes, but based on that definition, then, no, I would agree.
Yeah, okay.
This is board activity, it's not staff activity.
Yeah, we can clarify that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for the map, that's about what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
The act for which you're familiar with, that is December, uh, so that is a board action. We bring that to you to review the audit financial statements, that's already in the process. We all, we, we are, just as information, we're, we're, we're going from a spreadsheet-based system that is, uh, homegrown to an actual software application that will be able to be operated by multiple people at different times instead of just a handful of few. Our popular annual financial report, I've mentioned it a couple of times, that's hopefully coming next year and that's just a scaled-down version, seven or eight pages, lots of pictures, glossy, that highlights our top issues that show up on our financial statements. So it's very user-friendly, very easy to read, very easy to understand. And then our GFOI compliant budget document, we're looking at that to be able to implement in FY twenty-seven. And then this isn't really a long-term financial plan item, but, uh, developing some sort of report card, this is more connected to the strategic plan to be able to have a circle back report on outcomes, which finances are part of that, but it's not all of that. So, thanks for the feedback on that, we'll, we'll tweak this a little bit to make sure that it looks, that it's showing just the roadmap for the board. Good feedback. And, next slide. Thank you, Megan. So this is just a, a close-up view of the next year's budget process, so we'll continue the budget redesign work, uh, we're working on a budget committee calendar right now and we'll bring that to, back to the board here next month.
You should put that in the rolling agenda somewhere, please.
Okay.
Just sending it to us isn't going to be sufficient.
Yeah, yeah. Do that. And we'll also, uh, put the general, the initial general fund forecast review with the board also on the rolling agenda, we're talking about that right now as well, including a forecast of SIP and game share. And late November, we'll bring back to the board the, or collect the guidance from the board in terms of priorities for the next year's budget and then we'll issue those, those get issued to departments in late December, departments begin preparing their budgets in December. And, uh, we're also working on the beginning of our financial policies, focusing on contingencies, reserves, and, uh, uh, fund balances to bring those back to the board at the end of this calendar year for next year. Continue us working on that. And budget officer and departments compare to the proposed budget, that's like January through April timeframe, proposed budget release is posted in April, budget committee and hearings and budget adoption again in the May to June period.
And just for reassurance, Commissioner Willie, I realize you'll be on vacation during late November, a lot of what we're going over today in part two will really provide some base input for that, so you've-
Yeah, it will, it's the, the general fund forecast is going to be interested in, so that's, yeah, I-
You're here through the fourteenth though, so-
That's mid.
Yep.
So we'll see if there's a header behind.
We don't, let me double-check to make sure. Yeah, we don't have a meeting the following week, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Quick question, next slide. So that's a quick overview, any questions?
Your forecasting assumptions, if you're going to, are you going to ask us for any guidance or are you just going to make them and, uh, keep them, or what is your style of doing?
So, so typically, what I would do is to get best practice information from the state, from other local governments, from colleagues, present that to the board's part of the forecast, but then obviously, of course, be able to change that as, as the board sees fit.
I, I don't have, just for your, I don't have a, uh, take, which, either way, it just seems to me that with, what's my mind disagree, but disagree with that. I need for understanding that this is a multi-year issue, not just one, that we ought to understand what guiding principles are, because when you're funded on forecasts, that's the guts of it, so it's big. And so if we bring it, we don't know how it's built and we don't know whether or not those assumptions will be the ones that we agreed to.
Yeah, I'll make sure we spell those out.
All right.
Yeah. Thank you.
I guess my question is, and what is it informed by?
Sorry?
And what is that informed by?
That, we'll have more conversation at our October work session with the budget calendar, okay?
Any questions for photograph?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Processes, processes, processes built on one another and integrated together. Yeah, yes.
So, we're starting the next kind of facilitated part of the meeting, the roundtable, and I wanted to, uh, I'm going to invite you to do a lot of mindfulness, but before we do that, I want to review the ground rules for this part of the meeting. My favorite, let the facilitator facilitate, um, share the air, um, which means we want to make sure that we hear all the voices from all the board members. Participate and engage, use the parking lot, parking lot parked up on the wall there. We'll make sure ideas that aren't on topic get, don't get lost, they get captured. Ask questions, listen to understand, and no phones or laptops or other electronics, please, for this part of the meeting.
Can I ask you a question? Am I the only one in the room that feels like I'm on an iceberg?
I think you're getting some air.
Oh. It is cold in the general room.
It is very.
I will corroborate that. Thanks.
No, it's, uh, don't fall asleep, you'll freeze today. So stay, stay engaged.
Okay, poke me every now and then, Willie. She's got the poker, so she's going to-
Exactly, it actually feels good, it's more of a nostalgia.
If she pumps you, doesn't get a reaction, you'd be able to get a blueberry.
Yes.
How about a magic wand?
It's fast, too.
It is, it's, okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Chair Harrington in a minute to introduce this part of the sess- session, um, but I first wanted to have just an invitation to a moment of mindfulness. Uh, if you're interested, please join me in spending a moment just paying attention to your breath, I'll ring the bell at the beginning of the moment and at the end. So here we go. Take a moment to focus on your breath, the gentle rise and fall of belly and chest as you breathe in and as you breathe out. And if you find that your mind takes you away from your breath, just ever so gently, bring your attention back to your breath. Chair Harrington, you want to kick us off, the goals for the roundtable?
Can I use the slides or are you going to use the slides?
Um, we're going to use the slides, uh, not yet, but we're, now is the welcome and then, um, uh, I'll do the agenda review after you welcome in, or maybe you feel like you've already welcomed everybody, um, and then we'll go to the guiding principles. Does everybody feel welcomed? Okay.
No, I don't, I want it again.
And I want to, yeah-
This is continuing your career form.
Our request is on the table, Chair Harrington.
Still on par from yesterday.
So, I just want to add to the welcome, that appreciation to Commissioner Trese and Chair Harrington for being part of the subcommittee that helped plan and review the agenda for today and help us get us to this place, thank you for that. Um, so what we're doing next is we're going to go over the guiding principles, you might remember, even though it was a long time ago now in August, um, the guiding principles, there are several that are posted that you all liked, um, there were several that you asked to have come back to you and we have posters for those two that Cindy prepared, um, so, um, that's where we're going to go, uh, next. Um, and then after that, there'll be a presentation, um, and we'll, once we have a, a set of principles that you all like, then we'll move to the discussion around priorities. Um, and then, uh, again, an opportunity, uh, as Chair Harrington offered earlier, to identify opportunities for ACR input on any of those priorities. Um, we'll look at, at next steps and make sure that what comes next is clear to everybody. Um, and then we'll wrap up before the clock strikes five, um, so that people have time to move to their other obligations. Does that sound like what we're typing? Okay. Um, so the guiding principles, the ones that you liked from last time, we could read them back to you or we could just take them as, as written, um, but we spent a bunch of time on them in August, does anybody want here to read it out loud again or should we just move to the new ones? What's your pleasure?
Okay, moving on.
Okay, okay. So, so Cindy's going to grab one of the new ones, um, do we have any other two on the board? No, we can just go in order that they come up. Just do them, put their- Yeah, we'll read them out one at a time. Yeah, thanks, Greg. So the first one that we're going to look at is-
How are we going to do this?
She gets the truth.
Uh, emergency preparedness and response. So the topics that there are additional, um, uh, principles are topics that you all identified last time that you wanted them to be guiding principles for. So the, the topics came from you already, some of these had partial wording already that you liked, um, but this one is a newer one, so Cindy, would you be able to read it?
Yes, so for emergency preparedness and response, the county plans for in response to critical incidents and natural disasters, including close calls by climate change, in partnership with the region, the state, and the community.
So how does this land for you? What do you think? Assist the emergency preparedness and response guiding principle? What do you think about this one?
Am I at odd angles or everybody?
Yeah, a little bit this way, thank you.
I was like, I want a wine in the corner, okay. There you go.
I guess to me, the thing that jumped out is those caused by climate change, that's always a discussion as to, do you believe in climate change? And then how do you determine if it is climate change? I mean, we've seen some heat domes and we've seen some heavy rains and we've seen violent storms and all that kind of stuff. I don't have a problem with that being in there, but to me, it's always this kind of subject to, I don't think that was climate change, I think that was just something, something else. But anyway, I just thought that's kind of interesting, I don't know what that has to do with emergency preparedness and response.
Uh, I'm wondering, along these lines, Commissioner Willie, um, it isn't for me important that it say including those caused by, but the thing that I feel has evolved is that there are disasters that are more frequent and taking larger form as a, because of climate changes, right? So, climate change isn't some magical state or focus, right, that I feel we have to have, but rather, it has been helpful to me to realize that the, the nature of disasters and, you know, doesn't even have to be natural, right? Just the nature of disasters, uh, is, is touched by climate changes. That's all. That, that to me is the only reason why the words, the words climate change is helpful to me, uh, so I even-
I hear you putting an S on the end of-
And getting rid of including those caused by.
I, I heard Chair Harrington, you were saying climate changes.
Yes, but along with this, including those caused by, because Commissioner Willie is right, you know, we don't need to be spending our time really getting, having our limited time derailed by, well, is it caused by climate change or not, right? Rather, I'm, I'm, as a board member, trying to make sure that I'm supporting the community in recognition that there are these more frequent and, and-
And there's no question, more violent and-
So could, could we say a natural disasters enhanced by climate change in partnership with the state and, and community? And it, you know, it seems to me that that's what we're trying to get at here, is that it's a new dawn.
I kind of like the changes part though, I don't know if that was in the first-
Enhanced by climate changes, yes, is what-
And changes becomes plural.
Cause that's a real issue.
Yeah.
Is that we're seeing- Strike that, strike those two words, yes, including those.
Including those and-
No, no. Strike the, strike including those.
Okay.
And the comma.
And the comma?
Yep.
No, we don't need more commas in the world. Commissioner Trump, yeah, was there something else?
No, I, I just think that what we're saying here is that our natural disasters have changed, they're- No, I, I just think that what we're saying here is that our natural disasters have changed their personality.
Yeah.
And they've changed because of climate change. Just.
We probably be more emphatic on the East Coast.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, Jerry wildfires here are pretty.
They'll have hurricanes.
Thank you.
We never did.
Yeah, but at least they can see those coming.
We never did.
But I tell ya, I really feel bad for the folks in Morocco.
Oh, God.
Sixteen inches of rain and then the two dams fail. Holy Jamali, the walls of mud. I saw in the national news last night, Bruce. Stunning.
So Commissioner Phi, any thoughts or comments about this?
No.
It's work, it's working for you?
Yeah, I think I, I just had a quick reaction about the word response cause usually, um, it's provide emergency planning and management is usually what I'm used to here seeing about Emergency Preparedness and Response, but I'm okay, I, I don't have any words in it.
It says plans for and response, so I get it, we're not just responding.
We're managing.
For too, yeah.
Managing, so that's the only, but I don't wanna add on to that, I'm uncomfortable.
Commissioner Rogers?
The only thing I have, I don't mind worry at all, other than the critical incidents is, is subject to interpretation and what is small issue made a big, so are we talking about major critical incidents? That we're talking about, gee, my stoplight went out, so that's a critical incident, it's amazing, better respond. You know, I, I don't know what we're trying to get at, I, I understand broadness, but at the same time, it's interpreted broadly by people. You have a lot of response to things that you didn't intend to.
Right.
So I think we're talking about major events, I don't think we're talking about.
Okay.
Minor events.
So would it make sense to add the word major critical incidents? Does that make it more clear for you?
Whatever those are, yeah.
Right.
Help me understand what a critical incident might be, and then I can, what do you think?
Well, emergency management uses this phraseology, critical incident response. So I think critical and major are one and the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you define critical and major just that? Because.
In this domain, yes.
Literally phenomenal, aren't they?
Well, it sounds.
So if there was an attack, if there was a, if there was a terrorist attack, God forbid, that would be a critical incident. It wouldn't be a natural disaster. I, I was just trying to find out in my mind what the two differences are.
Yep, nine eleven was in fact a critical incident.
So some, what I hear, um, Chair Harrington, you're, you're talking about is that this is the way that this phrase is used um, by Emergency Preparedness professionals?
Yes.
Okay. So, so, so yeah, it's meaningful in that context, in the kind of administrative context? So, okay, so let's take one more look at this, you wanna read how it did, how it reads now?
The county plans for in response to critical incidents and natural disasters enhanced by climate changes in partnership with the region, the state, and the community.
Do you like it?
Is, is enhanced a positive word?
Do you have a substitute, a suggestion?
I would say heightened.
Influenced, heightened?
Yeah, I don't know, I was just, enhanced seemed, when you read it, it seemed like it was.
Makes it better.
Yeah.
A positive spin.
Yeah, so I had an heightened by climate change.
Do you wanna, do you like?
I don't know.
I'm, I'm.
I'm okay with enhanced, I mean, I think that, that says that, I don't think it's negative, I think it just says enhanced.
It's gotten more.
Yeah.
It's gotten greater.
Then maybe that's a term I like.
I think got better. Yeah, I hear those as synonyms, but I'm.
Yeah, I don't, I just, it seems positive.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I feel a little bit.
Any other comments about the Emergency Preparedness and Response Guiding Principle? All right, we'll call, we're giving this a check, we're, we're giving this.
Check.
I don't like it, but that's okay.
All right, it gets a red check.
Okay. What would make it for you to like it? Major?
Violating the policy, definitely.
Major?
Yeah, does it show synonym for major?
Yeah, we can keep talking about it.
That's your own decision, I'm trying to figure that out. I understand, and respectful, it maybe means something in a very narrow group of people. Broad, but strategic plans are meant for broad groups, not for narrow.
Right.
So to major critical incidents, or would you say to major critical?
You're saying it's critical, major is synonymous, I'm not sure they are.
Who decides what's major?
That's.
Right.
The same people who decide what's critical, so.
So I wanna circle back to what's meaningful about guiding principles is that it gives enough information and guidance to you all and to staff about what things are, are important, right? So, so the goal of, of working through these guiding principles is really that you feel like what you're handing off, what you're saying or the guiding principles are in fact gonna provide guidance to the staff and to future planning. So if this isn't landing, I wanna, I wanna unpack it a little bit more and see what, right? Cause we want these to be meaningful when you're, when you're kind of handing them into the rest of the organization.
I'm not gonna argue anymore, but critical to me is, is definitely amongst many, many groups. Whoever said response to major incidents, major is something different. Critical, critical in mind is, oh, it's kinda like beauty is, oh, critical is, you know, those are forms, so.
So would.
If everyone's happy with that, go with it.
So would, we're.
Future boards will change.
Would it work better to add the word major and is that comfortable to the board members?
No, I don't think we want both words, I think we want just one word. So my question is, board, what do you think about adjusting major incidents?
It's gonna be a scuffle.
That's right.
It is, though.
Yes, yes.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that, if you're too critical to major, I'm fine with it.
Commissioner Treese?
Either way.
Either way. Commissioner Willie?
Okay.
Chair Harrington?
Ditto, not worth time.
So let's change it to major and then Commissioner Rogers, is that more coming up for you? Okay.
It's called, it's all.
Excellent, thank you. Perfect time for that to come out, cause we're moving to the next one.
Does that major or?
Uh, I think we would have to ask that Commissioner Rogers, was that major or critical?
It's really major.
It's a big, it's a difficult stuff.
All right, so the next one, the next one is also newer for today. Wanna read prevention?
Testing is difficult with it. Um, prevention, we believe in prevention, early intervention, and preparedness strategies that work collaboratively across the organization and with community partners to deliver services in ways that reduce longer-term costs and mitigate risks.
Very aspirational.
Commissioner Phi, this sounds aspirational, do you have? How do you, what do you think about it as guiding principles?
I think we're doing it, it's okay.
Yeah? Commissioner Treese?
Well, I don't think it's aspirational because I think we're doing it.
Oh, sure. Commissioner Phi, what's yours?
I think it's pretty aspirational, um, and not, uh, I don't mean that in a negative way, I'm just saying like, it's pretty empowering to aim for this.
It's inspiring.
It's, uh, something that's not, right, like included in the previous, so. Also dating the current years we're living in. Yeah, I think.
I think the guiding principle.
I, I think it's a good, like. Prevention and Emergency Preparedness and Response usually, uh, but I have seen, like, it's, what, what do you value? And I think going through pandemic, prevention being a key guiding principle is just the top. We lived through a pandemic, after a hundred years of loss pandemic, kinda like that.
Commissioner Treese, how does this land for you?
It's fine, I just, you know, I just feel like there's going to be reaction in the community about community partnerships, I, I see the ARPA discussion in that, that's all I'm saying. That doesn't mean that we don't put it, it's not a, it doesn't mean it's not part of our, uh, what we believe in.
Yeah.
I don't, yeah, I don't understand and with community partners, um, why that really needs to be stated. Over in collaboration, we talk about, uh, with other public organizations.
Yeah.
So, um, but what is important for me is across the, the words across the organization, right? We don't choose to pick up a service just because it's prevention, right? We, we're talking about the guiding principle of how prevention is used or as a guiding light in ways that reduce long-term costs and mitigate risks as we're doing this work across the organization in service to the community. So it's, it's not a guiding principle that can be used to add more to the portfolio.
So does the, the phrase community partners, does that seem redundant to you or unnecessary?
I don't, to me, it's not adding any value.
It's, yeah, okay. Crossed out, and with community partner? Yeah.
That's, that's my perspective anyway.
Commissioner Willie?
But wait a minute, though, could we unpack that crossed out? Um, prevention, is the intention of this guiding principle inward? Or is it sort of like a zoomed out view of the entire county and what we are guiding ourselves? What grounds us to do prevention? So I think that maybe we can have a conversation, this is internal. I think of the, the way it's written, it's sort of that zoomed out to say internally, across the organization, but we also work with the community to do these prevention services because we can't do it ourselves. And everything is with collaboration and partnership with community to have a healthy community and community where, uh, so I didn't, maybe we need to have a conversation about internal focus versus the zoomed out view of this being an entire county view, so I think. Who wrote this?
This was written partly, it's partly from the, uh, 2020 not approved discussion plan that like we said we looked at last time and partly first of all.
Adding on to it.
Based upon our conversation at the last meeting.
That's right, that's right, thank you, Chair.
What about adding, I mean, it is like collaboration is here, I don't know, yeah, or having a presidential.
So the way it was, the way it is in the 2020 Discussion Guide, we believe in prevention and early intervention and will promote healthy lifestyles and choices to prevent problems and reduce risks. So we, uh, talked last meeting and so staff took what we discussed last meeting and, uh, suggested this in response to our conversation on August 3rd.
That's correct. Commissioner Willie, what, what is this thing for you?
I'm in agreement with taking it out because of the collaboration statement. I think it, it just feels like it was just kinda added in there to emphasize something that doesn't work with prevention, so I'm okay with taking it out.
The whole, the whole principle? Or, or just with taking out the part?
Add the rest, community partners, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
In act of it, I'm waiting to see what the rest of the other topics are, cause I can't remember, so I'm just trying to figure out this prevention.
Oh, we can, we can share that with you. Um, the other topics are the equity, um, and. Okay, nevermind. It was equity, it was the mission statement, and there's, what else do we have, Cindy? And, and.
Equity and inclusion and pursuit of excellence.
And what was the last one, I'm sorry?
Equity and inclusion and pursuit of excellence.
And I'm trying to remind myself, why did we feel that we needed to have emergency preparedness and response as part of a guiding principle versus something that's in our portfolio? I just don't remember.
I think I did that.
Okay, but I'm not, but, and can you remind us as to why we said, let's try that sweater on?
Yeah. I believe it was because we were talking, I, I believe it was because we were talking about, uh, the fact that we, we've experienced more emergency-type related issues and as we look to the future, we will most likely continue to be in that environment.
Oh, okay.
So that's where I think.
Yeah, yeah.
That was about, and it wasn't just like about the subduction, it was more, we've had a pandemic, we've had these.
The future's uncertain.
Yes.
It, it feels more uncertain, that's, yeah.
So it's more. It requires more response than it has previously.
Uh, thank you, that is very helpful.
Yeah. So, so now there's this question, there are no Commissioner Rogers that we wanna speak to, like, do you want this? Do you wanna have a prevention as one of your guiding principles?
Are, is it up there because it was in here?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
And.
What, with this is kind of bringing me, sorry to take us back. It feels to me like the guiding principle isn't emergency preparedness and response. I still like the words, but it's about, um, um, flex, uh, future, not future focus, but, um, um, embracing the future, preparing the, for the future, future preparedness.
It's like preparing for the unknown, I mean, it's like being, it's like standing there with your knees bent versus stiff-legged.
So, so preparing for the future, Chair Harrington, you're talking about is kind of the broader category that emergency response is under, um, and then maybe also prevention is under. But, but let's just stick with the emergency.
No, I don't like the phrase emergency response.
Right.
Preparedness and response as a guiding principle.
It's like an earthquake, it's, it says earthquake to me.
So.
Can you let me finish first?
Sorry.
So that, so Chair Harrington, are.
Earthquake doesn't work for me either.
Oh, no, I'm saying that's what that seems to need to be about.
So is the category for you, Chair Harrington, thinking about preparing for the future, is that the guiding principle, like be prepared for the future is the guiding principle?
Recogni, it feels more like recognition of future uncertainty or something along those lines.
Okay.
It's not just an earthquake, it's that these frequent major incidents and natural disasters are more disruptive.
Yeah.
In our future years, as we've already experienced them. And we, we already have, for example, financial stewardship, right? Um, so, which is about looking out into the future. It's just that, I like everything except the phrase. It's almost like fu, embracing future dynamics, right? To me feels like a better phrase than emergency preparedness and response, it feels like a department. Nothing else feels like a department to me. We don't have a Department of Prevention, a Department of Accountability and Stewardship.
Right. So if that was retitled as, uh, future uncertainty, that would feel like a more appropriate title for that one. Can, so I wanna check.
Or just, or just no better title needed.
Okay, so we can, we can.
Or come back when we do the pursuit of excellence, maybe that's like in the future, maybe incorporate.
So can you make a note with that potential better title? Okay. And then can we go back to the prevention statement? Is this still a guiding principle? Do you wanna have a guiding principle that's about prevention? Or does this feel like, I mean, a couple of you said this might be covered elsewhere? Commissioner Rogers, I don't know if you spoke to this.
Oh, the only thing I'd add is why I, when I read it, you have to understand my major business, not English major, but I didn't understand what it said and with, it seems like I was adding, I started smiling.
People drawing attention to that. This, this sounds, I mean, part of the work plan, doesn't sound be aspirational at all. Naturally, you do that. Naturally, you come to work and you work hard and you have various things, but I, I don't see it as being a guiding principle. If it worked in some, perhaps others, maybe.
If we don't list it, then we can not do it. So, that's the part I'm trying to pick up on.
Yeah. We, we can work into something else, but prevention in itself, isn't that a work plan?
Could it be titled wellness?
Pardon me?
Could it be titled wellness?
That's the part that we talked about last time, it isn't just about health.
Yeah.
No, and wellness to me isn't about health.
Wellness to me is definitely about health.
Yeah, it does narrow.
It's, it's the 21st century word of health.
So, I, I, can I ask the question first? Do you want a guiding principle? Remember the guiding principles are these overarching kind of signposts that point the, the staff and, uh, to like the preferred future. So, do you want a signpost around prevention? You want, do you want that to be a guiding principle that helps direct and help filter? We say yes to this, we say no to that. But what are your thoughts about this? Because it's not clear to me that, that you all think this belongs at the level of a guiding principle.
I, I appreciate what the chair said, I mean, but the chair, um, like, if we don't have it, then we don't. So I think it's important to have it because, uh, we just need to come up to an agreement on how we phrase it. And I think it's phrased well, um, it's just a few words that needs to be unpacked. Uh, I think it, for me, it's important to have, so I'm aligned with you. I'll stop there.
Thank you. Commissioner Trese, is this something that you want to have as a guiding principle, a principle around prevention?
Uncomfortable with it.
You're comfortable with it. Chair Harrington?
Yeah, I see it applying across our various aspects of the portfolio.
Commissioner Rogers?
No, I think it fits underneath and something else. That's the reason why I was saying, I'm waiting to see what else they've got out there. I mean, how many guiding principles do we need? The more guiding principles you have, the more you have.
We have fewer now than we currently have in the 2020.
Well, A, that's a draft, to see, we've all agreed, it's an old draft. So I'm not using that as a guiding principle.
No, I'm taking credit where credit's due.
I'm not using that as a guide post anyway, because we've all agreed it's, uh, not.
Okay, so not for you, what about for you, Commissioner Rogers?
Um, I don't think we're Jerry, but I, uh, I think support language, it's almost a preamble to what we're doing. It's more of what we think totally versus a principle by itself and it's how you conduct yourself.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have an agreement about this. We do have people who like this as a guiding principle and, and, and some folks who aren't sure about it. Let's move to the next one. And then, uh, just one more after that. So this is the mission driven, and this was in that 2020 draft. And mostly you seemed, it seemed to resonate with you, but some of the vocabulary, um, you weren't thrilled about, so it's new. Sure.
Our mission driven, we commit ourselves to serving the community. The county will actively engage others to provide a wide range of services, including mandated and regulatory services. The county fulfills the varied roles of direct service provider, partner, or supporter. The county will continue to evolve as a modern, effective, and efficient organization.
So, can we, can we do the reverse order this time, Commissioner Rogers?
Well, I liked working, it's all, it's like a preamble again, I'll, it's, you go from there. I was like, if it was a tag on anything, we're saying, is that really part of a guiding principle or is that part of our mission statement?
Yeah. Yeah, so being mission driven is, could be part of reflecting your mission statement. So is it also a guiding principle, an organization that's mission driven is, you know, particular?
Yeah, it's a problem first of all, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yes, and in the, in the 2020 draft, it was the first, and it was the first thing. It was the first thing. Commissioner Willie, what, what's your thought about mission driven as a guiding principle?
Well, I think that's, I think that's our starting point. Underneath our starting point, we have collaboration, valued employees, integrity, trust, accountability, stewardship, and everything else that goes along.
Yeah. So this, does this, this works for you?
Yeah.
Like number one?
Yeah.
That's number one, okay. Chair Harrington?
Yep, to me it's number one. But it's definitely in the list.
Yeah.
I agree with it being number one. I'm, I'm concerned about the county will actively engage others. I, I don't, I don't know what others mean. And when I look at the, from the 2020s, the, the sentence before that is, "The county will not be the government of last resort that attempts to provide all services that no one else can or will provide." Then it says they actively engage others. So, to me, that statement is hanging there and it doesn't have balance for me.
So.
But the, the point of the mission.
The what statement, I'm sorry, the point statement?
It's the second sentence. The county will actively engage others to provide a wide range.
And maybe it's, maybe others, if, if what we mean there is community partners, maybe we say that.
Rather than others.
Yeah.
Community, community partners here?
Well, if that's what we mean, and I'm asking others at the table if that's what we mean.
Well, and, and the part that I get hung up on, it's not about that the county is saying others will provide the range of services, including mandated and regulatory. It's, we'll engage others as the county ensures, you know.
So you're not looking at others as the providers, you're looking at others.
I'm, I'm afraid that's how some people interpret it.
Well, I do.
Yeah, what my point is, we as a county make sure that we meet the communities that provide a wide range of services, including mandated and regular services. And why do we care if we do it directly or through others, right? Because we talk about under collaboration, working with others, so.
So if you could rewind the tape and get what Catherine said, I'd be comfortable with it.
But take out the word "to" and put "while."
Yeah, and I wonder about this now. We commit ourselves to serving the community as in, in providing a wide range of services, including mandated and regulatory services.
If you, no, if you just put, the county will actively engage others while providing a wide range of services.
Oh, I see.
And then I N G of providing.
Got it. Yeah.
And so, that, because I agree.
Yeah.
The other one's kind of set on like, well, we're going to have others provide.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like to me.
Yeah, yeah.
So when you do it this way, it's while providing.
Yeah.
So we're going to.
So that's community input.
Yeah. Well, and we may engage people to do it through contracts we have or I G As we have. People get too hung up on, it's not, this doesn't dictate how something is done.
It just read that way.
Yeah.
Now it doesn't.
Right.
Commissioner Dog?
The way I read it, um, and this might be from public health lens, but the way I read it was, I was okay with the "to" to provide because I was thinking of, like, the accountability, regulatory accountability that, like, the environmental health services do and things like that. So that's how I read, like, we're going to make sure we engage others to provide healthy, you know, services and follow the rules and regulations. And then I also, I, I thought this might be, it was just a bit wordy for me, the last, the county fulfills the varied roles of direct service provider, partner, or supporter. And then the county will continue to evolve, I was fine with that last sentence actually, but that, the other sentence just right above it seemed like it didn't fit.
The county fulfills the varied roles of direct service part?
As a, as a value.
Provider or supporter, that seemed extra to you?
It, it seemed a bit in the weeds for me, um, rather than a value, like a, a, a guiding principle. But the board feels comfortable, I can live with it. But I think while to provide a wide range of services, including mandated and regulatory, I just, I, I think I need to sit with it to make sure I'm interpreting correctly. But the while seems.
While providing a wide range of services, including mandated and regulatory, so.
Because there is an outside and inside for me with the "to." But while seeing, I am reading it and everybody correct me if I'm reading it wrong, but the while creates the "in" for me, just the county will be providing. We will actively engage, we're providing a wide range of services, including mandated. While we do that, there is a role for us out there in the community to actively engage people to make sure they're doing the mandated and regulatory services as required. But other than that, um, in terms of numbering, this, yeah, it makes sense to be the, the top.
Yes, the first one, every, okay. So what, what, how does, what Commissioner Fies just said, how does that mean for other people?
I think there were two things she was getting at.
Yep.
Sentence three, to me, uh, isn't really helping us in the work that we're doing now here in the 2020s.
Yeah.
I think it's a remnant of the past, uh, and we're just carrying it forward for some reason.
Yeah. Does it feel kind of in the weeds, the, the way that Commissioner?
I, I can't really, uh, tell you what it is we're getting as a result of continuing or carrying that sentence as part of this.
Is it implied in others?
Commissioner Willie?
I don't know, I'm confused as to what, what, what this is.
Okay, so, so I want to read it through with a change so that everybody can hear it and then check in with you about if this is a, a guiding principle you want. So, mission driven, we commit ourselves to serving the community. The county will actively engage others while providing a wide range of services, including mandated and regulatory services. The county will continue to evolve as a modern, effective, and efficient organization.
If I could come back to the second thing that Commissioner, well, it was the first thing, right? I spoke to the second thing. The first thing she was getting at is, um, you know, the county provides a wide range of services, including mandated and regulatory services, while actively engaged with others, uh, is what I understood her point. And I think it's a good point because what I was, uh, speaking to earlier is, but I pushed, I mushed sentence one and two together. And I didn't see the point of carrying on the active engaging with others per se. But I think she's got a good point that the actively engaging others has value, but it's, it's leading with that when it's, it, it's not adding the value there. What it should be adding the value at the end of that sentence. And I keep, I still, I need you guys to help me understand as a commissioner how line three, what line three is giving us value for. And it may be assurance for others, but I'd like to hear your words.
Yeah, it's kind of a statement, it's really not a mission statement.
It's not.
I did, when I read it, I, I omitted it. Yeah, I did that on purpose to see how it would land for you without that, that sentence. And it, nobody, that wasn't the part that you, that you had more feedback about.
We must all be visual because we will read, we might, I read that.
So what if we took out that, it seems to be, that third sentence seems to be problematic. What if we omit that? And then Chair Harrington, what, you had a phrasing that was taking into account Commissioner Fies', um,
Yeah, let me, let me come back to that.
No, I was just going to add that it, it's, that third sentence is like what we used to say in relationship to, we're not Old Noma County.
Okay.
That is what that was about. We're not Old Noma County.
Okay.
That's what that, I believe that that's where.
I have a carryover. Right. So, okay, so now.
Okay, so now your question of what was I getting at earlier? It just, so I felt like we had three sentences when in fact we could have two.
And you do.
Okay. We commit ourselves to serving the community, providing a wide range of services, including mandated and regulatory services. The county will continue to evolve as a modern, effective, and efficient organization. That accomplishes it in two sentences, but what was missing was actively engage others as I just read it, okay? It, so it could equally say, we commit ourselves to serving the community, providing a wide range of services, including mandated and regulatory services, while actively engaging others. The, the county will continue to evolve as a modern, effective, and efficient organization.
I like version two.
How did you do our first sentence?
So, if I, can I read this back, but I think I got it down?
Okay.
We commit ourselves to servicing the community, um, providing a wide range of services, including mandated and.
Regulatory services.
Okay. I can re, rewrite it, but I'll find it in the background. I want to start here.
Good, okay, this is, this is what collaboration looks like, thank you everyone. Um, it keeps getting better, iterating. Okay.
No. Wait, here's what I would have done.
Yeah. Were there, I did, it's my review.
All right, now, the next one.
We commit ourselves to serving the community.
Yeah, I see it, okay. And then, a wide range of services and make.
Got it? Got it? All right. You got it all? Okay.
You, you, you know, you know, I know you know this, but this means we have to record too, so you can always report back to.
Yes.
Get exactly.
Okay, so we, we'll leave this up. Yeah, so we commit ourselves to serving the community.
Providing a wide range of services, including mandated and regulatory services, while actively engaging others.
And then the last sentence is.
The county will continue to evolve as a modern, effective, and efficient organization.
Okay.
Okay, equity and inclusion.
Well, I think it's nice words, my thing is interesting. In 10 years from now, what's going back, somebody wrote it right away, but it's, uh, the interesting part, I think, in the past, which we trade away from, that's fine, it didn't matter to me, is that we were trying to say we weren't a government of last resort. That was important, it may not be now, but in the days ago, everybody pointed to the county and say, they'll do it. We don't do it, they do it.
Yeah.
And I don't know that there's any limiting, kind of like I had on a scope issue earlier. Say, but we're not everything to everybody, and we're not. But pure reading, that was fine.
It works. Commissioner Willie?
I'm good.
Chair Harrington?
I'm good.
Commissioner Trese? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for your work on that. And I, I want to say some of it is wordsmithing, but it's also a conceptual alignment. Like, it's also really, you're talking about and unpacking the things that are, are values to you, right? That are, okay, so our next one is equity and inclusion. So I'll read that while you move the.
Is this getting a check?
This one gets a check, right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So, the. So the equity, so the language from this comes right from the equity resolution that you all passed in 2021?
2020.
2020, thank you. So this language says, "Equity inclusion. We're committed to creating an inclusive culture that values and celebrates the diversity of the county's residents and employees. We are committed to fostering, supporting, and strengthening equity and inclusion in the county's programs, practices, and policies." And this is just directly taken from your, from your resolution. What, what, how does this land for you? What are your thoughts?
No suggestions.
No suggestions, Commissioner Willie?
I'm good with that.
You're good with it? Chair Harrington? Commissioner Treese?
I, I have an issue. Sorry, but I, I, through the process of working with our resolution and with ACRE and other groups, I'm a little concerned about, "We are committed to creating an inclusive culture."
Oh, got it.
Yep. Because that puts it on us.
Yep.
And I think that we need to inject in that, we are committed to, I don't know, the larger we, whatever that might be. So you, you know what I'm, I know Catherine knows what I'm saying because I hear it.
I, no, this, I really appreciate your raising this because I am all about these days and moving forward, the business of county government. Right? So now I look at this and what I think subconsciously, but don't say, is, as a county government, we're committing to act in a way that fosters an inclusive culture that values and celebrates. So we're not owning creating.
Yeah.
Let me just drop the word creating out of the, out of...
You're committed to an inclusive culture that values...
Yes, yes, thank you. That's the simplest approach, yep.
Can you start?
Thank you.
Yep, the word creating. Yep, we're committed to it, right? Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Treese.
I, the, keep going.
Commissioner Fies?
I, I was fine the way it was. I think I appreciate what this is aimed to be, creating intentionally. But to hear, like, we're committed, trying to figure out... Come back to me. Let me process this. Read it in turn, in my head and get it out of the way.
Did it just foster or has it, has it... Yeah.
Without the process?
Yep, no, with the process.
Can, wait, wait, can I come back to my other thing? Earlier, I didn't want to touch it because it's like I'm kind of exhausted in discussing equity and inclusion. And to me, that inclusion, well, we use the word create and include, we, I have, "We're committed to an inclusive culture." Okay. I could leave it as is. And to me, strengthening equity is all about racial equity. They're one in the same. Yeah, I just leave it.
It's, you would leave it?
Yep.
Well, leave the creating in there?
No, 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 we've taken care of this.
So, so the way that it reads now, just to read it one more time. "We are committed to an inclusive culture that values and celebrates the diversity of the county's residents and employees. We're committed to fostering, supporting, and strengthening, sorry, we're committed to fostering, supporting, and strengthening equity and inclusion in the county's programs, practices, and policies."
Yep, I'm still all good with that. Yes, thank you for...
Did I get a red check mark? Yeah?
A piece of?
I'm sure I was. Yep, you're living with it? Okay, all right, we have one way.
I...
I, oh, I thought I was making, no, I'm sorry.
No, I, I think I was trying to process what the word, the deletion of create means for this. But then I saw we're fostering, so trying to figure out, like, "We are committed to an inclusive culture."
Yep. Do you want me to hear it again?
No, I'm, I'm trying to read it to myself in turn and just, just do my due diligence of like processing this out. But I think, I, I think it stands along fine. I'm, 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 I'm sorry.
Check.
Check, okay. Okay, Commissioner Willie?
No, I say check.
Oh, you were saying check, okay. So this is our last one. Thank you, thank you for, I, I went too fast. Thank you for flagging it.
Oh, yes, yes. No, it's actually, thank you.
I appreciate it, okay. So we, we have one, this is our last one of the principles, guiding principles, pursuit of excellence.
All right. Pursuit of excellence. We commit ourselves to service and excellence. Innovation and calculated risk-taking are essential. We commit ourselves to best practices and professional standards and to continuous improvement and creativity.
With liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Fies? Do you want to, do you want to comment on this one? How, how does this land for you as a guiding principle?
End of that, the word pursuit, I actually do like, so. But I want to go back on like this and what the chair was saying about emergency preparedness and sort of having that foresight of the future. But I didn't see any word that would make me think of the future. This is sort of like, we are grounding ourselves to be excellent.
Commissioner Treese, how does this land for you?
Uh, you know, it feels, it feels old fashioned. It feels like something I would have read fifteen years ago.
Got it?
Stated?
Well, yeah, I, I, but you would have seen in other, but I'm trying to think, what would I, what would I put in its place? And, you know, I, I can see something like the pursuit of excellence through One Washington County or something that is more current to, to what we're trying to create here today.
So it's not feeling as relevant?
I just feel like, you know, that's...
That's what One Washington County is based off of.
Yeah. So, for me.
Chair Harrington, how does this one land for you?
This one feels fine. This is what we've embraced and are continuing to pursue.
Commissioner Willie?
I think it's redundant. I don't like it at all. I think it's already encompassed in all of the statements we've got up there, so.
So where do we have contin- continuous improvement and creativity?
Reading your accountability and your stewardship, I mean, all of them don't say exactly that, but they imply that.
Well, that's, that's...
So do we need to say we're going to have a pursuit of excellence?
Yes, right.
You don't think that's saying, our mission statement is, "We commit ourselves to serving the community, blah, blah, blah," and all of your...
There's a lot...
Accountability and stewardship. Just a second, just a second.
Yeah, okay.
We have, we say we have collaboration, valued employees, integrity, and trust, accountability, and stewardship, and we have to say we have a pursuit of excellence?
So...
So isn't that, to me, we're saying the same thing and just using different words?
It seems, it seems redundant to you.
Yep.
It seems like it's not necessary.
Looked up there, I don't care.
Commissioner Rogers, how does this one land for you?
I, I like it. I read it differently, Jerry, but I don't think it, but I would have to add.
Okay, what would you add?
I would have something on the bottom that includes, prevention includes emergency preparedness. But we could say, because those, to me, are kind of not...
They're kind of hanging out there.
But every one of them said, if they weren't, you sit there and say, through prevention and emergency preparedness. They're not, stand alone on my, I think it's valid. And even though it's old fashioned, I understand, it sounds old fashioned, so it's a value statement.
Yeah, and so you, it works for you. And also you would probably add the, the prevention and the emergency preparedness in, as part of the pursuit of excellence, like you might roll those three together?
This is a suggestion.
Okay. Chair Harrington?
I, I can see Commissioner Rogers' suggestion of folding the prevention in here. But first, let me step back. Why do I think there are elements that are on here that are important? And that is because there, I don't see risk-taking going across the organization in, in other ones. And because of what we've had to put in place deeply over the last two and a half years around professional standards, continuous improvement, and creativity, that's not coming through to me in the others. Not that it couldn't be added to others, but I do see the benefit of taking the elements of prevention and adding it here. As to his last suggestion to fold that emergency preparedness here, I have a slightly different thought. For me, that sheet is about acknowledging where we find ourselves now within a broader ecosystem or environment. And it causes me to try to figure out how we communicate the fact that we're having to... It used to be that organizations could get by with having plans and, excuse me, once a year, they essentially had to drop everything and deal with that, and then it would go away. And now we find ourselves, at least once a quarter, having to face these big events. And I don't think we've figured out our flow of operation to keep it going while we have these disruptive forces. So that's what that one is, is causing me to do. But I think calling it out as a guiding principle is, is it right? It doesn't fit in the theme of a guiding principle, even as I remind myself that one of the things we talked about in the prior meeting was this need to remind ourselves that there is this Cascadia prediction that's sitting out there and, and we need to be ready for it. So I find myself a little bit at a loss as to what I'm suggesting other than not having that whole page as a guiding principle.
Not having the prevention as a guiding principle?
No.
No, I...
Emergency preparedness.
Not having emergency preparedness.
Keep prevention.
So, and then the pursuit of excellence, what's your thought about it?
I think it's, it, it's important for us to have in the strategic plan for our community that we are a servants-driven organization, right? We commit ourselves to service and excellence in that. Innovation, it's important for us to continue to make sure that innovation is part of our culture. I, I value that it's got calculated risk-taking. I can relate to all that's on that pursuit of excellence page. And I, I really do like the idea of folding the prevention part in here.
Okay. So, and Commissioner Treese, this was one, the pursuit of excellence one, you, work, all that wasn't resonating all that much with you.
But I appreciate what I've heard from my fellow commissioners here, you know, and I get it.
Okay. So I think, I'm sorry, did I?
No, and I, and I, I do like, you know, when I look back at this 2020 plan, the prevention piece here was minimal at best. It was, "We believe in prevention and early intervention, and will promote healthy lifestyles and choices to prevent problems and reduce risks." So it was, I think, more around health at that, back in that one.
And there were also transitions going on about early childhood education and whatnot.
So I'm, I'm fine with moving prevention under excellence.
Okay. Okay. So you, no, Commissioner Rogers?
Sure.
Commissioner Willie? Moving prevention under pursuit of excellence, it's not a...
It's a bit too wordy.
Yeah, it's not a wordsmithing that we can do today in this space. It's just, that, that's a lot. We can maybe try and work on it over the break, which is what we're up to now.
I would like to wear another sweater if I could. I like using that analogy. Commissioner Willie was suggesting that, and I'm, I'm using my words. From his viewpoint, there were elements under pursuit of excellence that are already in the other sheets, using just different words. So I'm trying that sweater on, okay? And I still come back to, those are, those are some powerful motivating words. I can see some of it under collaboration. And under valued employees, we expect them to be accountable for their decisions and actions, right? That gets to excellence.
Maybe it's the pursuit of excellence that, but as Pam said, Lisa added the exclamation point at the end. Maybe it's the pursuit of excellence that's just...
The patriot in me.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe that's it.
Is it more of a service commitment or service excellence? Excellence in service, service delivery? Is it the title?
The title bothers me.
I guess...
Yeah.
Okay.
To me, how many guiding principles do we have before they become, oh, yeah? Oh, yeah, there's another one.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's another one. And so, you know, again, to me, I don't, I don't care. We can leave it in there. I don't, I don't know that it has any impact.
Yeah, it's not, it's not landing for everybody. And I think it would take significant wordsmithing, which we can't really do in a meeting effectively. So I think we should, we should leave this one and just acknowledge that we've arrived at these guiding principles before our break. Mission-driven, emergency preparedness in response with a revised title. Collaboration, valued employees, integrity and trust, accountability and stewardship, equity and inclusion.
I wasn't saying that the mission-driven had a different title.
No, the emergency preparedness needs a different title.
No, I think it needs to be out.
Yes, I agree with her.
The, the emergency preparedness is just gone.
Correct.
It stays somewhere, but not here.
But not as a guiding principle.
And also I heard Commissioner Rogers say, "The prevention and the emergency preparedness be added in somewhere here." Sprinkles.
Be added into the...
I support keeping the prevention alone, but I'm saying, if we're going to get rid of the emergency.
Okay, can we step back for a second? We have mission-driven, collaboration, valued employees, integrity and trust, and accountability, and stewardship, and equity and inclusion.
Yes.
Okay? We still have a problem. We want to note, pursuit of excellence, we have a problem with the title.
I do, but I don't want that everybody else.
I can agree with that.
Yeah.
And we did have the suggestion to move the... And we did have the suggestion to move the paragraph of prevention under this category.
Right.
To pursuit of excellence.
Which will be retitled.
Right. Right, okay, and that's in.
And finally, emergency preparedness in response is removed as a guiding principle.
Okay, we'll take that out. Okay, so the wordsmithing, the, the, the re-authoring that needs to go out, I mean, that needs to be done, is, is weaving these two together, the pursuit of excellence and the pre- uh, prevention? We're gonna weave those together.
We're gonna weave those together.
Could I?
If I could just suggest one other thing is, what's the first, one, two, three, four, five words of the mission driven?
"We commit ourselves to serving the community."
"We commit ourselves to serving." "We commit ourselves to service." I mean, that's the redundancy of the whole.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
And so, put the pursuit of excellence verbiage underneath the mission statement. I, I, again.
Who will be first to guess?
I'll vote on whatever you want me to vote on.
Yes.
You're in, you're in pain. You're in pain.
I vote on nearing the end.
Okay.
I have another comment.
Okay, and then we're gonna go to break.
Okay. When I look at this, I see everything at a high level that are, that, like you say, they're values, they're guidelines. They're collaboration, valued employees, integrity and trust, accountability and stewardship, equity and inclusion. And prevention, to me, gets down into, how do we do it?
Yeah.
Emergency prepared, the emergency one, prevent, that, that was how do we do it?
It's gone.
So, and excellence, to me, still stays at that top level.
Okay.
So it's, I'm just saying that they're actions versus visions.
Right.
But there's one part of it that is strategy tactic, services and ways, that we do this part and reduce long-term costs and mitigate.
I'm happy with that included in excellence.
Okay. It's the last, yeah.
But you don't like the word excellence.
Yeah, right. Okay, so, thank you for that. We did arrive at one, two, three, four, five, six clear principles, guiding principles. And then this last one has elements that you like, and it needs wordsmithing that we don't want to do.
Yes.
I'm not sure we've captured accurately what Commissioner Trees summarized.
If I understand it right, and I'm asking, this whole part on the prevention sheet.
Goes away till the last sentence. Down to.
You like, yes.
That's, that goes away.
So you're not doing this part.
That's a tactic, is your saying.
You're gonna put it.
So it's more than that.
I'm gonna put it on here so it'll be easier to write.
Might want to keep the word prepared.
I'm already going there. Right. These words go over there. Okay. Good.
That was my, Commissioner Willie.
Now we still just say the title.
Just say yes.
Okay.
I've already said yes. We're moving.
Okay.
I'm going to break.
So we do title for this. We have the.
Even better, it's our second paragraph under mission-driven.
Right, right.
That would work for me too.
Works for you?
As a second paragraph under mission-driven?
Uh, maybe.
I said, I'm done, I'm done.
Yeah.
Mission-driven's a lot, a lot shorter.
I, I'm, I'm for keeping the prevention principle guide in mind, so.
Okay, so we don't have agreement about this one. So we're gonna go to break with agreement about the principles that are up on the wall. And this one is gonna take some more work or some more refinement. We're gonna take our break. When we come back, we're gonna hear a presentation from Rachel, and we're gonna start discussing priorities. So it's three, can you come back at three ten, and we'll start on the next.
Can we have three fifteen?
Okay.
Please, I just.
We would have three, we'll come back at three fifteen, ready to start talking about principles.
Thank you.
Thank you all, that was lots of really.
Thank you for that, it's great.